Good evening. I'd like to call to order this city council, this meeting of the Forest Grove City Council. The time is seven thirty. Sorry for the three minutes of late start time. Will the city reporter please call roll? Oh, she's, oh, wait one minute.
Counselor Gustafson? Counselor Gustafson?
Counselor Gustafson, can you hear us?
Counselor President Valenzuela?
Here.
Counselor Schimmel?
Here.
Counselor Falconer?
Here.
Counselor Martinez?
Here.
Counselor Marshall?
Here.
Counselor Gustafson?
Who did you say?
Counselor Gustafson?
I can't hear you guys, can I?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Recording in progress.
We're working.
Can you hear us, Counselor Gustafson?
Counselor Gustafson, can you hear us?
Counselor Gustafson?
Can't hear you.
Testing? Testing?
Can I move on to the land acknowledgement and pledge ball? Should I move on or should we wait?
Yeah, you guys can carry on. Do you want me to log out and log back in?
So, did you hear that then, Counselor Gustafson?
No, I can't hear you.
Okay. Forest Grove City Council-
I can't see, but I have captions on, so it's picking up your captions, so I can read what you're saying.
Got it. That makes sense. Yeah, I'm gonna go with the land acknowledgement. Forest Grove City Council meetings are located on the land of the Tuolatin Kalapuas, who call themselves the Apaladi. They are now part of the Confederate tribes of Grand Ron. Will the audience and council please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which is one nation, without borders, indivisible, with liberty and justice-
Public comments. Time provided for anyone wishing to speak to the city council on an item not on the agenda or on the agenda but not scheduled for a public hearing. Comments are limited to two minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. The public comment period shall not exceed thirty minutes unless a majority of councillors present vote to extend the time. Zoom attendees may use the raise hand option to be called on. Our first public comment individual is Mr. Dale Feek. I think you know the seat.
Mayor Wenzel and councillors and councillor Marina Valenzuela.
Valenzuela.
Thank you.
Valenzuela.
Valenzuela. Reason I say that is because Commissioner Willie, our district forest commissioner here, and the Chair of the County Commission, Catherine Harrington, was here. And I've listened to your son give more than one presentation at the work sessions because he's one of the government affairs directors for the county. So, it's nice to know that you have a direct connection to county people through your son. All right, so and Commissioners Brian Schimmel, Angela Falconer, Karen Martinez, and Michael Marshall. I'm Dale Feek, Forest Grove resident since 1966. At a previous public comment, I suggested that you declare yourself a sanctuary city. I don't want that to happen at all anymore. I've had a chance to talk with Mayor Wenzel. I've had a chance to talk to Bridget Cook from Adelante. And I've had a chance, and she's talked to the people. And I've been assured that since we are a sanctuary state, and it was established in 1987, the first state in the nation to pass a statewide law stopping state and local police and government from helping federal authorities with immigration enforcement. And so, since we are a sanctuary state, it's more important that our county enforcement officers, our local police staff, really support that as a state and do what's necessary to protect our vulnerable people. The Matarreche Band, I think they were all maybe from Latino. Some of the students up here on city government were also very important to protect them and their family and to make sure that they have safety and security and feel like they have voice. So, that's, I rejected what I said before. What a presentation they gave to Matarreche Band and the students. And I really like your personal way of doing things, Mayor Wenzel. You're just so open, so spontaneous, so joyful, and work hard. So, I just want to thank you and all your rest of your Commissioners for volunteer basically your time to make Forest Grove a great place to work, play, and do business here. So, that's all good. I've given already some of you the book on tyranny, Twenty Lessons From the Twentieth Century. If I didn't give you one and you want one, I'll give you one, okay? I'll give you one. I'm gonna put it over here. Anybody else want one that hasn't got one so far? Okay, I'll put it over here and you can pick it up.
Thank you.
Great. I've given over sixty-five of those books out already. I went to the Environmental Quality Commission meeting on Friday, made a public comment, went to the work session, and then I make public comment. And I gave all of the Environmental Quality Commission's one plus the Director of DQ. It's very important that we have actions that we can take. And Timothy Snyder says twenty actions that we can do to maybe protect everybody that lives locally, regionally, in the United States. So, thank you. Oh, my time's up. That's a good time to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feek.
Thank you.
Our second person signed up for public comment is Mr. Alan Winery? Winery, sorry. I was wondering. I was going back and forth. I guess they're-
Good evening. I have lived in Forest Grove since 2021. I love living here. I love the tranquil, peaceful way things happen here. I like the vibe that's very similar to the town that I grew up in, Grants Pass, Oregon. So, what I've come to talk about, however, is the Kyle Park. Now, I have never come to a city council meeting anywhere in my life, much less have I spoken at one. And so, I was expecting to actually speak after seeing the Kyle Park presentation. So, if I say something that's already dealt with here, once the presentation happens, I apologize for that in advance. Okay? I have a minute and thirty seconds left. So, I think the consultant's proposed plan is mostly full of good and useful improvements in both the loop trail and park areas. I like most of the park features, the play equipment areas, picnic areas, the pavilions, parking for cars, bikes, the interior trails, the fenced-off area for dogs. Those are all great. And I hope that the things that we're going to see in the presentation, I hope in those drawings, I hope those things are realized. I, however, am concerned about whether it is proper to include the bike skills facility, the pump track that is going to be built or is at least proposed to be built in the consultant's proposal. I find insufficient interest in the bike skills facility, as reported in the user community survey that many people in the neighborhood that I live in took, and many people did respond to that. Twenty-six seconds left. Okay. In the community survey conducted in the last part of September, seventy percent, one hundred and three of forty, one hundred and forty-three, replied that they're in walking distance of the park. But only twenty-seven of one hundred and forty-seven folks responded that they wanted to see the bike skills facility and pump track. That's eighteen percent, less than a fifth. And so, my question is, why so much? Why so much interest in the bike facility if it's only got less than twenty percent? I won't take more than my time.
Thank you very much.
Will there be an opportunity, however, to make questions, to ask questions, excuse me, at the end of the presentation?
No, not for public comment, but the councillors will. So, I would imagine that maybe one of us could ask a question or have a discussion about your question. But it's just, and then you can always come back at the next meeting to do another public comment or email us as well. And that also is public comment that goes into the packet, and we all read.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. And congratulations on your first time providing public comment. I always appreciate people engaging, interacting, and caring. So, I was not being sarcastic. I think it's a great skill. Is there anyone else in the audience who may not have seen the public comment signup sheet that would like to give public comment? Is there anyone on Zoom who might be an attendee who would like to give public comment? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on with our next agenda item, which is the consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine, oops, are considered routine and will all be adopted with a single motion without separate discussion. Councillors who wish to remove an item from the consent agenda may do so prior to the motion. Any item or items removed will be discussed and acted upon following the approval of the remaining items. What is the wish of the council?
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
The consent agenda was moved by Counselor Martinez and seconded by Council President Valenzuela. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none. The consent agenda, I did not hear, Counselor Gustafson, can you hear us again?
I can.
Did you say, did you say aye?
I did.
Okay, great. Just sorry, I just want to make sure because I, I don't know, audio technical stuff. Okay. So, the consent agenda is approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of seven to zero. Thank you. Moving on, additions or deletions. Mr. City Manager, do you have any additions or deletions?
No additions or deletions. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Any proposed by council? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to item E on our agenda, which is presentations. The council will hold questions until the end of each presentation. A two-minute reminder will be given to the presenter to conclude remarks. And our first presentation for the evening, and we're only three minutes behind schedule, which I guess is our three-minute late start time, so we're doing really good tonight, is our Washington County Commissioner, Mr. Jerry Willie.
Thank you, Mayor and councillors. It's good to be with you. I haven't been here for about three or four months. I try and make it two or three times a year around to the six cities that are in District Four. And just to bring you up to date a little bit about what the county is up to right now. So, I have to, first thing I have to say is, Mayor, that was an impressive state of the city that you just finished up there. That was your first one solo, I think, wasn't it?
Mm-hmm. So, for people in the audience, in the past, we have a really good partner relationship with the Chamber of Commerce. And so, I want to say that for the last ten years I know of from being on council, the chamber has graciously hosted both the mayor of Forest Grove and the mayor of Cornelius at their chamber luncheon. So, that is how traditionally has been done since I've been on council. So, it was our first. And thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. The mariachi band. Is that, was that local? Because I missed the introduction of that, so was that local?
I mean, that's what happens when you show up late, but-
Thank you, Mayor.
Sorry.
Pointing out the obvious.
Yeah, so I do want to give, I do want to give a shout out to Leslie Nunez and the mariachi band, Trudashen Director. She came to Forest Grove as an orchestra teacher ten years ago. She started the mariachi program and now has grown to a varsity program, a JV program, and a middle school program within ten years. And yes, we love them here in Forest Grove, so.
Yeah, that was impressive. The singer was perfect, and so-
I didn't want to follow it. I was like, oh, no, I should have waited to have them at the end.
Should have put them at the last, anyway. But, and then you've got some great things going on in the city of Forest Grove. Certainly trying to build a police station. And so, that's an important asset the community needs to have. The TV highway study that's going on, just lots of things going out here in Forest Grove. And certainly, I'd be remiss if I didn't say the Council Creek Trail continues to be developed. You're still about probably three years easily out on that before that's gonna become completion, but there's a lot of work to be done between now and then. So, looking forward to that, that project as well. I'm gonna try, and I've walked from Cornelius to Hillsborough on that trail before they pulled up the rails. So, now this summer, I'm gonna try and go the other way and go Cornelius to here because each one of those segments have their own complexities. And so, it's easier to see them when you're actually walking the rail line. So, I might even invite you to do that if you're nice to me.
I'll go last comment, maybe.
Anyway. That's not a criteria. It's never a criteria. So, probably the number one thing that the county's working on right now is, of course, our budget, as well as each one of you are gonna be going through the Forest Grove budget. Our budget for the fifth straight year is deficit. We are twenty million dollars upside down. We are making some hard decisions. We are probably going to suffer some layoffs and certainly the reduction of some services. And we're working not only with our departments on that, but certainly our legislators, because quite frankly, unfunded or partially funded mandates is a part of the reason why we are short money. And so, we're communicating that on a regular basis. We also have a number of legislative priorities that we're working on. I won't go through all of those, but one of them is a courthouse. We need to have a new courthouse. It's gonna be very expensive, and it's a very long process. And so, we've asked the state for one point two five million dollars for planning. And actually, there's a courthouse queue that you have to get into. And we have not been in that queue, and now we are working on that. So, it takes us a couple of years to get that. We're hoping to get that money this year. We have, as each of you know also, this is the Forest Grove Forest Service District for our timber. And we, our timber lands is kind of works with Telemuck, so we blend that a little bit. We're called, there's a whole, there's fifteen trust counties, and we are, this district represents three counties, and I represent that group. We have, the Habitat Conservation Plan is gonna significantly impact the timber revenues that we are going to get going forward. So, there is a House bill that will actually require the state forester to create a ten-year sustainable harvest yield. So, that means we'll at least have a ten-year snapshot of the revenues projected over that period of time and be able to deal with that a little bit more than each year trend, hoping that the state forester and Oregon Department of Forestry actually harvests enough trees to provide income. Washington County, just on one side of it, sixty-eight percent of our forestry money goes to schools. And so, the schools that will not get this funding will have to rely more on the state school fund, which, as we all know, is problematic. So, there's a domino effect to all of this. We're just trying to get ODF and the Board of Forestry to work along with us and not make this so punitive. The other thing that, of course, we're all anticipating is the transportation package. Representative McLean is a key figure in that, and I had a conversation with her the other day. That bill probably will come out sometime in the middle of April. They've spent a lot of work going around through the state and trying to find, identify where the priorities are and what's important. Of course, ODOT, you hear a lot about ODOT now being in the news and that they are upside down in their funding as well. Senator Starr has, Representative McLean has appointed Senator Starr to be tasked with an ODOT accountability proposal, so he is working on that. So, hopefully, we'll be able to see what comes out of that in the next few weeks. And staying with that, the Joint Ways and Means Committee has begun their roadshow to hear the communities across the state about funding priorities. The next one is March twenty-second. Unfortunately, it is in Gresham, so you'll have to leave there on March twenty-first to get there by the twenty-second. I'm kidding, of course, but it is, it is a long hike. It's at Mount Hood Community College. But those are important, and they are definitely well-attended. And you can watch them online, so I would encourage you to do that. On the housing side of things, of course, we have the project that's right here in Forest Grove that we are working on, funded by SHS money from the Metro Initiative. It is at thirty-one twenty-seven Pacific Avenue. I'm sure that you know all of this. We are in the due diligence phase of this, and we have, first period ends June fifth, but we're not gonna make all of the due diligence. We have to have an environmental impact study and a variety of other studies. It'll probably be, we have two ninety-day extensions on top of that. So, it will probably be fall before that project is closed. I'm really excited about it because, because I think it's gonna be a great project. It's gonna provide, what is that, ninety? Ninety house? I got this right here, sorry. Sixty units of affordable housing. And so, it's gonna be a great project. And I'm hoping if you have any concerns, Brian, you have reached out to me. We've had good conversation. Any of you have any concerns about this or need some information for it? Please reach out, and I will be happy to get that for you. Hillsborough, of course, had a ribbon cutting a few weeks ago on their shelter housing project there. It's at this end of town, on the west end of Hillsborough. It's gonna have seventy-five guest rooms, eight point three million dollars from SHS, seventeen million dollars total. So, that is gonna be coming online in about a year, and that would be fast. I hope they can get it done in that, but sometime in twenty-six. So, some other things that are a little bit more fun, and then I'll quit. The Salmonberry Trail, of course, continues. That's the one that starts in Banks and heads over the coast, eighty-two miles. We are trying to develop the seven miles from Banks to Steb Stewart Park, and we're looking for funding and all kinds of things. The amount of work that goes into building a trail, you'd think it'd be pretty easy. We got a rail line. We pull up the rails. It's nice and flat, and everything should be good. But then there's all kinds of hoops you have to jump through. The biggest, of course, is funding. It's about eight hundred thousand dollars a mile to build that, so we need some money. We've asked the state, the Oregon Trail Foundation has requested eight million dollars from state legislature. That's optimistic, but whatever it is that we could get would certainly get us going towards getting the first leg of that trail. The coastal side of things, Telemuck, Wheeler, they all have their own special little projects going on. So, it's kind of gonna be piecemeal, but it's gonna be very, very cool. It's gonna be a number of years before that comes to fruition. I think that's all I've got. There's a number of other things that the county is dealing with, but for right now, that's all I got. So, got any questions?
Thank you, Commissioner. Questions? Counselor President Valenzuela?
Thank you, Commissioner. So, you mentioned that there is a deficit in the county. You're about to work on the budget. Can you share which services will be impacted?
No, the budget doesn't come out, the proposed budget doesn't come out for about another month.
Okay.
They have been working with all of the departments. Our top exec, Tanya, gave the directors, asked the directors for three proposals. One's ten percent cut, one's thirteen percent cut, and one's a seventeen percent cut. It's not gonna be across the board on this, but so we're gonna try and be very strategic about where that impact is. But we won't know that for a while yet, and we're gonna be working with it. And the commission's gonna be looking at that as well. So, I have to say, stay tuned with that. But it's, this is our fifth year of budget deficits, and we're kind of tired of that. So, we're looking for alternatives. You know, the Measure Five and Fifty thing has ran its course. We can no longer, we cities can no longer function under a three percent cap on property taxes. So, oh, speaking of that, though, there is two other things. We got the library levy. I was supposed to tell you about the library levy on WCCLS. That's coming up. Commissioner Therese and I are on that committee, and we're excited about that proposal. That information will be coming out here pretty soon is what our recommendation's gonna be. That is in November of this year, as well as the public safety levy. This is a countywide public safety levy that will, that also is gonna be in November. And there is a different, a couple of commissioners that are working on that. That information will become available pretty soon.
Any other questions? Yes, Counselor Schimmel?
Thank you, Commissioner Willie, for being here. And just a couple acknowledgements, and no surprise from our earlier conversation. I mean, our objective is certainly to preserve some of the obligated funds with the library services and Mistip for some of our critical projects. So, thanks for representing us in those tough budget deliberations. And just acknowledging on your permanent supportive housing project, you know, my optimism is in the leadership of the project. The source of funding, I believe, is from the state, the Oregon Housing Community Services. Affectionate about the values and the programmatic intentions that they have. And I appreciate the intentional engagement that your team has with our chamber and our leadership here. So, I think that's gonna help build a sort of an organic approach, even though that it's county-funded, so.
Absolutely. Well, and I appreciate your involvement in this, councillor, because it is, it's in your city, and it has to meet your criteria and has to be something that your citizens welcome. And it's a good asset for the community. So, nope, we have to have a partnership here. It has to work. So, I would encourage you to please be engaged with that.
Speaking of the budget and engagement, Chair Harrington mentioned that the mayor plus chair meeting a couple of months ago, that there would be an elected meeting, like budget meeting. So, I mean, just to kind of give us as much information as possible, because, you know, you know, as being a former mayor of a city, that our library funding and transportation funding, we are very reliant on your budget, right? On the levy passing, but then also how you try to reallocate these dollars. And so, if, whenever you find out, or if you could remind Chair Harrington, you know, I want to give my council the opportunity to go like, I'm in some of those meetings, but it's important that we all are hearing the information because it's those- Because it's those, specifically those two things directly impact our community. And so we need to be out ahead of that as much as possible and doing our work.
So can I answer your question?
Yeah, you have a date?
Wednesday, four thirty.
This Wednesday?
Yep, as in two days from now.
Okay, at the, what, public service?
At our auditorium at the county. Budget meeting for local elected, so.
When did that even?
I don't know when.
I didn't, I didn't, I mean, that hasn't popped up on my calendar at all.
See, did you know about that?
I would love if one of you could go because I have parent teacher conferences. So that'd be great. I mean, I have a general idea, but if I could get one of y'all to go, that'd be great.
It's Wednesday.
At four thirty. The Public Service Building, their chambers. Okay, great. Any other questions for Commissioner Willie? Again, Commissioner, I appreciate that you show up for Forest Grove. You advocate for us. I appreciate the support tonight, so.
Absolutely.
Thanks, thanks so much.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. And again, great job.
Thank you. Okay, we are moving on to our second presentation, which is about the Forest Grove Loop Trail Master Plan and our Kyle Park Design from some of our favorite consultants, Place and our Parks Director, Ann Lane. And I believe another individual that I don't think I've met is Jill Rose, Roselle from Alta. Okay, great. Come on up. And Jocelyn Bates from Place. And we also have numerous other representatives from Place in the audience.
This is like right next to your house. Thank you for your time this evening, Mayor and Council. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide you with an update on the Forest Grove Loop Trail Master Plan and Kyle Park Design. The Forest Grove Loop Trail and Kyle Park were both identified as future projects in the twenty sixteen Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan. The master plan specified Kyle Park to be a focused bicycling facility designed to serve all ages and abilities. The Loop Trail and Kyle Park projects are both listed on the capital improvement project list for fiscal years twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, as well as city council goals and objectives for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. The project is being paid for by a Metro Trails grant and Parks Systems Development charges. Since the contract was finalized in September twenty twenty-three, city staff have been meeting regularly with Alta Planning and Design Team and their subcontractor Place. Both the Forest Grove Loop Trail Master Plan and Kyle Park Design are expected to be completed this summer. At this time, I'd like to introduce you to Jill Roselle with Alta Planning and Design and Jocelyn Bates with Place.
Thank you. I guess if we go to the next slide, yeah, I'm going to talk to you about the Loop Trail and then Jocelyn will follow up with the. Next slide. We had a lot of community outreach surrounding this project. This particular slide does not capture all of it, but a single event. And the, what we heard from everyone is that people are very excited about the Loop Trail. They want more safe pathways and connectivity for people to walk and bike around the city. If you see, I don't know if you can tell, on the graphic, there's the gray line that goes up and around and it's labeled number one. That was kind of the preliminary planning, had identified that as the Loop Trail. And as we started digging into it and looking at existing conditions, it became apparent that there's a lot of challenges with that route and that it's a very narrow right-of-way along David Hill Road. The traffic's moving fast. And then as you're coming down on the west side, there, there's logging roads. However, we were not actually able to find any logging roads. There's a lot of very steep terrain. There were a lot of challenges associated with that alignment. And it led us to look at what if the Loop Trail actually went, came south before that. And so we went to the community with that question of alignment one or two. And many people liked both options, but in the end recognized that two would provide an actual accessible route for everyone and would be an option for people to bike as well, as well. So we proceeded with that. And then three off to the side there on the east, you can see, that became an option to come through the natural easement area rather than continuing on David Hill Road. So we asked folks what they thought of that and, and that was something people were also excited about. So if you can go to the next slide. Here you see what would be kind of the southern portion of the Loop Trail that primarily follows the alignment of the desired trail that already exists there. There's a gravel path. And we asked folks to provide feedback on where they'd like to access the trail and where they'd like to have trailheads along that portion of the pathway. And also what kind of amenities they'd like. And there was both the in-person outreach and the survey. And we heard a lot of the same trends, the restrooms, benches, drinking fountains, lighting and trash cans. Next slide. So here, if you look at the yellowish gold color, that shows the proposed alignment for the Loop Trail. And the stars indicate proposed trailheads or access points. And then the remainder, remaining part would be existing pathways and bike lanes. Next slide. So we've completed a ten percent plan set to show the alignment. And within these plans, it includes the metro project from the Nature Neighborhoods Grant. So there was three different grants that you received funding for, for re-indigenizing some areas for wetland restoration and for pollinator planting areas. And so these plans include all of those projects as they would be. And we have provided this to the city staff and Clean Water Services for review as well. Next slide. Here you can see what the path would look like going through that natural easement area that was discussing. Next slide. Here you can see, this is along David Hill Road. So it's essentially similar to what is already there with the bike lanes and sidewalks. Some portions of Loop Trail would have this condition. Next slide. And here's an example of a small section where it goes through the neighborhood because it comes south by Thatcher Park. And then it goes through the neighborhood just south of that new development. And so through here, there's a small section where the bicyclists would be on the road. It would be like a neighborhood greenway with some traffic calming measures. Next slide. And then here you can see the pathway as it would lead into Kyle Park. As a separated shared use path. Next slide. As a part of this project, we're also looking at the transition from Kyle Park into the Loop Trail, specifically along B Street. If you can go to the next slide. I just want to acknowledge that we proposed there'd be a pedestrian activated beacon there where you press the button and the lights flash. And then you can see on the plan view or the map there that there's additional signs and light in advance for drivers to recognize that that is in fact up ahead. Somebody is hoping to cross, walking or biking. All I have about that. And I think, Jocelyn, if you want to.
Is it okay with, I know we're going to break up the presentation, but is it okay if we ask questions and do discussion about the Loop Trail and then Jocelyn, you present on Park, on Kyle Park, just to kind of keep it? Is that okay with the presenters? Okay. Are there any questions or comments about the Loop Trail? I'll start. I just want to say, thank you, thank you, thank you for that beacon pedestrian crossing. You know, as Forest Grove has grown with housing, you know, some things haven't been always caught up. And so Gales Creek Terrace, there's a new housing development. There's lots of homes. And I actually was listening to my students telling me just this year, they're like, Lenzel, our bus stop is across the street. It's dark. Cars won't stop because, you know, people are coming from the south, from forty-seven up B Street, maybe to go to the high school or come downtown wherever. So. I just want to say I really appreciate that, like the overall safety for pedestrians and people on bikes. Like you, you know, got that and we're going to make it like better for us. So thank you. That's just my one comment. Counselor Falconer.
I will echo what she said because my kid is probably one of those students who said exactly that. That B Street there, the speed limit is thirty-five miles per hour. I don't know if you've talked to Public Works about whether or not if, you know, now that there's a lot more housing in that area, you know, the, the nature of that street has significantly changed, I think, since, you know, before when the sidewalks were installed and some of them are missing on certain sides of the road. But I'm definitely very excited about that beacon because my kid does not get seen when it's dark in the morning trying to get to her bus.
Anyone else? Okay, I think we're, I think we're good with the Loop Trail. Thank you.
Next slide, please. This is the schematic design for Kyle Park. It's, you know, it hugs Gales Creek and B Street. There's the B Street Storage and the Forest Grove Power and Light on its edges. And then to the north are residential areas. The Loop Trail comes through Kyle Park and there's, we, we have, because there's a restriction between the north and the south, there's a tight, tight part there. We have bigger plans where we're focused on the south and the north. So we could go to the next slide. This is the southern end and the actual entrance to the park. Off of B Street, there are forty-five parking spaces, a drop-off area. And this, we're calling the trailhead, the B Street Trailhead. There's a picnic shelter and restroom in that plaza area. And to the south are the bike facilities. And also a pedestrian path that hugs the, the top of the bank that wraps around the bike facilities. And it's not for bikes. It's just for pedestrians to enjoy the nature. Next slide. The northern part is a more passive part of the park with a picnic meadow, inclusive playground, another picnic shelter, a nature park, and then dog runs for large and small dogs. The gray road that you see that goes through there is right now a service road and that will be part of the Loop Trail. The sort of yellow paths are concrete and those are pedestrian. At the south end where the site, the park gets kind of tight, we had, were asked by older generation, although I think it's, can be used by any age, a bocce court and some game tables. So we're, we're, we've got something for everybody in this park. Next slide. We, I think you can see things maybe more clearly in three dimensions. We've got a series of renderings here. This is the bird's eye view of the entry with the parking and the brown indicates where the bike skills facilities are. And we'll show you another sketch of that. We had a bike workshop a couple of weeks ago, and so that design is developing. Next slide. This is looking east and you can see the bike facility on the right and the nature park on the left. Next slide. And another view a little bit closer. So you can kind of see the connection between the, the north and the south. You can see the dog run a bit there just between the storage facility, which is all fenced and hedged. And the start of the residential. Next slide. This is looking down at the picnic shelter and the dog run and the playground and picnic area. The wetland area would be to the right of the picnic meadow next to the creek. That's an area that typically floods. And so there'll be some restoration work there. That's one of the metro grants. That will help with that. Next slide. This, then this slide and the next one show the, the entrance from the parking lot and the drop-off where immediately there's the picnic shelter and the restroom. We can go to the next slide. The community thought it might be fun to have the drop-off area available for food carts or special event truck or, you know, ice cream truck. And this is the, the gravel path that hugs the, the creek that continues on up to the north. Next slide. This is the picnic pavilion at the north end, right next to the Loop Trail, and you can see the inclusive playground through it. Next slide. And this is looking from the other direction. On the left is a bird blind. This is part of the restoration of the wetland and the metro grant to, we're proposing one here at the north and one at the south end so that people can get off the trail and there'll be feeders and bird blind and kind of the boardwalk to reach out over the river and get closer to nature. This is an image of the inclusive playground. We are showing a lot of facilities here. We're going to be doing costing efforts shortly. So, but this is kind of a, you know, really exciting image of what it could be. We may not have as many features, but we're, we'll see. And another view with the picnic shelter. The nature playground is to the right and the wetland restoration area is on the other side of the fencing there. And this is looking north. Again, there's the nature play on the right and this is part of the Loop Trail right here. And the dog run, the small, for dogs, small dogs and for large dogs. And looking back to the south, again, the, the picnic area and the wetland restoration area on the right. Next slide. We had meetings with Clean Water Services and and had a surveyor outline the fifty-foot buffer zone or vegetated corridor from the creek. We had to shift the restroom building and the picnic shelter ever so slightly, but there can be no buildings in that fifty-foot setback, but we can have pathways. So we feel like we're in good shape there with those limitations. And next slide. This diagram shows emergency vehicle access and lighting for the park. We met with the fire marshal and located, the blue dots indicate where fire hydrants might be located. The red line shows emergency vehicle access and also operations and maintenance access through the park on the Loop Trail, which right now is a service road. And the yellow dots indicate lighting that the parking lot would be lit and the Loop Trail would be lit between pavilions. And there's also And, um, there's also an option to secure the park, uh, with a vehicle access gate, um, so that it can be closed at night. And a couple of weeks ago, we were very excited to host Progressive Trail Design. Uh, they're a, a national firm who does, uh, bike facilities all over the country. Um, there, they were just incredible. We included the Northwest Trail Alliance in the meetings and had a full day workshop, uh, where we, um, you know, met and drew around a table and walked the site. And have, they have developed a, a very cool scheme, which, um, is for beginners and intermediate. It's not a large enough site to include kind of expert skilled riders, but it's for learners and for up to intermediate, so it covers, uh, all ages. Um, it's, um, we learned that it's like the ski hill, that there's, you know, green and there's blue and there's black diamond. And so we've got two levels of green, two levels of blue and no black diamond, um, in this bike skills park. Um, it is family focused and, um, uh, it's, um, it's really exciting, some of it. Well, there's no terrain here, so they're going to build up terrain. So, um, the, the intermediate, uh, riders can start from a higher level and gain some speed and go around, um, over the, the course and, um, the jumps. So we, we learned a lot about, um, bike parks and, um, dual pump tracks. It's pretty exciting, very impressive. Um, so we are close to finishing schematic design. Our next steps are to, uh, finalize the costs for the park and for operations and maintenance. Uh, and we'll finish schematic design, uh, at the end of April. Uh, Alto will finish the loop trail documents at the end of April. And then we will move into design development and construction drawings. And, uh, we'll have that done by August and so we can start construction after that. And we can open it up to questions.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Falconer.
I have two, um, on the slide that depicts the, um, there's a couple of them. On the picnic shelter, um, I noticed that the glue lamps sort of stick out exposed. And I just wondered, because I'm close to, my, my day job is close to Director's Park and you probably are familiar with the fact that they had to rip those out and replace them soon after installations. And I just wanted to just note that, yeah, exposure to glue lamp equals rot. And I don't want that to happen and I'm sure that's on your radar, but it just jumped out at me.
Yes, this is, um, a rendering. The shelters have not been designed and absolutely we'd be very, very careful about that. Absolutely. Yeah, we know how, the, what, what the weather does and yes.
Yes, I'm sure it was painful for the Portland Parks people to have to take that all out. I'm sure it's very expensive.
Yeah, good eye.
The, um, other question I have, um, is about, um, the bike skills course. And I wondered if the folks that you were meeting with on the ground and the, you know, designers, if they had some information, maybe some lessons learned to share with you all while you were walking that and talking about designing a course like that. Because, yeah, I guess my question relates to if we have a, if we have an asset like that, if we have a course like that, does it, does it compel riders to, does it encourage them to use this course as opposed to going into the protected areas and finding and creating their own skills course in an area that might be less suitable, might be more dangerous for them, um, can actually impact and harm habitat? You know, we've got, it's, I mean, it's surrounded of course by Gales Creek, but then there's also the nearby wetlands. Um, and so I'm curious if you, if you've learned anything about, you know, how a benefit, how it can actually be, not just benefit to the kids, but, but beneficial to the habitat and the surrounding wildlife.
Yeah, absolutely. It gives them a place to ride and to develop their, their skills and, and strength. Um, not all communities have one. Portland has a, a really big one, um, kind of at the east side of the city. Um, and it's very, very popular. Um, so it does, I think it does help protect natural areas.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Gustafson.
I have a question. I just, I just wanted to say I absolutely love this. Great job.
Thank you. Counselor Schimmel.
Thank you. Well, I echo, uh, Counselor Gustafson that I think both the, the trail and the park are beautiful. Uh, I think I would venture to say the Cal family would be pleased with what, uh, you, you've created for, uh, for the property that they've, they've offered to the city. Um, and Ms. Lane, I'll always be interested in, uh, the long-term operating, uh, costs and replacement schedule. And I, I see that this, this will be built out in, in this next fiscal year. Uh, how is, how is the, or do the grants allow for some operating expense? Or what is the plan for this next budget cycle or for future cycles that you expect this will, it will cost to maintain?
So I think it's important to, uh, maybe answer that question, uh, by separating the two projects. Um, the Forest Grove Loop Trail is a master plan. Um, it's important for us in, as we forecast future funding opportunities, that we have that master plan completed, uh, and adopted by council so we can sort of shop it around. We, you know, we, we have it available to us as we apply for grants. Um, and we protect our SDC monies as much as we can and use those as matching funds. Um, but really put our efforts towards, uh, securing grants to help fund that. Uh, the Forest Grove Loop Trail is part of the transportation master plan as well. Uh, that trail is considered a transportation system, uh, so that will be where we take that project. Uh, when we talk about Kyle Park, um, it is very important that we take the time to understand what are the short and long-term impacts on our parks maintenance team, bringing a park of this magnitude into our system. Um, that is a crucial point in our decision-making on when we can build this park. When we put the RFP together, uh, we spelled that piece out. We wanted to make sure that whoever our consultant was that got on this project knew that was a very important piece for us to understand in the document development of this project. We have to know what we're getting into and if we can handle it. Uh, this is an eight acre park. This is much larger than, um, most of our other parks and it has a lot of amenities and a lot of very special features that, um, take special skill to maintain. Uh, eyes wide open going into this project. We may be able to afford to build it, but we have to be able to maintain it.
Just to follow up, do any of the, the grants or the money that has been obligated, uh, extend to operating for some amount of time?
Uh, the grants that we've received so far pay for the master plan of the loop trail and design of Kyle Park as a trailhead. Um, typically grants and are not able to be used for maintenance. Parks SDC monies definitely are not able to be used for maintenance. They are just for, um, construction and expansion of recreation opportunities. So we cannot use those monies for maintenance.
And maybe that's a question I, uh, for us or for the mayor, Jesse, is when, when do, does the council make a decision to proceed with building this park?
Why, I think we probably would not decide until after we, I mean, there's a, as, I don't want to overspeak and Jesse can correct me, but there's a budget, there's a huge budget implication, right? So I think there has to be a decision at the budget level, um, with the, the next levy, you know, and knowing some more things before we, we're at that point to make that. Is that an okay answer?
Yep. Well, I heard next levy, but they're, they're going to have construction documents later this year. So that there's some gap in there. I mean, when, as far, I'm just talking about as far as when do we start spending money on the build out of the trailer park? Versus when the maintenance and operating.
I, I understand what you're asking and I'm just trying to say, we would, the, I, I mean, and again, I don't want to overstep, but we would probably have a work session, we would need to have a work session with council before that. And then, you know, kind of tease those things out.
I also just like to add a comment that, um, just because the maintenance funding is uncertain at this time, doesn't discount the value of designing this park today. We need to have gone through this process so we are prepared should that day come. Um, this process of designing Kyle Park is, we're almost two years in, we're a year and a half in on it. Um, so it's preparation.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, just a couple of things. Uh, I just want to say thank you to both consultants. I think that for me, um, in long-term planning, it's all about community engagement and making sure we're meeting people where they're at and engaging the whole community. And I think that both of y'all did a really good job of that. And that kind of leads me, I want to like, the public comment we had earlier about why the, you know, the pump track and kind of the percentage, I don't know if Director Lane can answer that question for the gentleman or, I mean, I have my opinion of why I think, but it's always better to come from the expert.
Uh, in twenty sixteen, when we did the Parks Recreation Open Space Master Plan, um, there was really heavy community engagement at that time. Um, and the community is, are the ones that brought forward that idea. They wanted to see cycling facilities in Forest Grove that are dedicated to all levels of cycling. Um, and in the development of that document, Kyle Park was pointed to as the location for that cycling opportunity. Um, so we really took the responses that are reflected in that master plan as we moved forward to this design.
Perfect. Thank you. Counselor Martinez.
So I have to say, I was at one of the, um, public, I can't think, um, at Kyle Park.
Yeah.
And there were, were a lot of people who were really interested in some sort of bike skills track. So I do concur with that.
Thank you, counselor. Okay, seeing no further questions, we're going to wrap up. Jesse, do you need to talk? I don't think he does.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry, Sidemanger. Our third, our third presentation is our annual audit. I see a lot of people getting up to leave right now, Paul. How does that make you feel?
I just can't join them or I'd be headed out too. No, sorry.
The, the annual audit's a, you know, a fan favorite.
I know this is the part of the meeting you've all been diligently waiting to hear from, so well, right. I'll just, quick introduction, the, tonight we're going to have Chris Odell, CPA. He's from Clear Trails CPAs and you might not notice, but when the audit started, it was with Polly Rogers. But during the, during the course of the audit, the people that do government audit, the governmental auditing at Polly Rogers split off and formed another firm called Clear Trails CPA. So we assigned the audits over to them. You'll see the URA report has Polly Rogers on it since it's got done early. And the, uh, city report will have Clear Trails CPA on the report. And so this is one of the four positions that you appoint. You appoint, uh, municipal judge, city attorney, city manager and the city auditor. So this is one of the four, four positions that the county appoints. And I will be asking you to appoint, reappoint, consider reappointing Clear Trails as the CPA, as our auditors at the next meeting, but we'll deal with that at the next meeting. So I'm going to turn this over to Chris Odell now from the firm and let him take over.
Thank you, Paul.
All right. Thanks, Paul. So, um, so as Paul said, I'm here tonight to present the audit results. Um, I'm going to cover both the city and the URA. Um, so yeah, I'll get right into it. Um, so the purpose of the audit for both is to form an opinion on the fair presentation of the financial statements and their compliance with governmental accounting as well as, um, auditing standards and Oregon municipal audit law. So it was conducted by examining evidence to support, um, amounts in the disclosures, um, by using a sampling of transactions, um, on a test basis. Um, we also inquired of staff and did analytical procedures. So, uh, another part of the audit is obtaining an understanding of the city and its financial environment and its use of internal controls. Um, so we do this in order to assess the risks of material misstatements in the basic financial statements and to design, uh, the nature, timing and extent of our procedures. Um, so these material misstatements, they could be from, um, errors, fraudulent reporting, misappropriation of assets, uh, or violations of laws, regulations. As for the results of the audit, um, both the city and the URA were issued an unmodified opinion. So that's a clean opinion with no reservations. Uh, we found no exceptions or issues requiring comment or the state minimum standards. And then there was also not a separate management letter issued, which means there were not any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal controls, um, that would be required to disclose to council. Um, so yeah, I want to thank Paul and Sally for all their hard work. As always, they're excellent to work with, um, and we didn't have any difficulties performing the audit this year. So yeah, uh, yeah, so that's all I have for tonight. If you have any questions, I can take those.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions? Counselor Schimmel.
Well, just an acknowledgement, well done, Paul. Thanks for taking, uh, being a good steward of our finances and, uh, you know, thank you, Chris, for the, the thorough explanation. Um, I'm glad that the, the counselor disruptions in your office don't prohibit you from managing your.
And it's not just me, it's all my staff too. They're very diligent in, on how they perform their work. So it's not just, like I said, it's not just one person that gets it done because you can't just do it with one person for effective internal controls, so.
Okay. Thank you both. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
That was painless.
It should be, yes.
Okay. We are now moving on to item F on our agenda, which is public hearings, ordinances and resolutions. And we have resolution two zero two five dash one three establishing a proclamation policy that our very own city recorder has worked very hard on. Hello, Mariah. How are you?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Good, thanks.
All right. So hopefully this one's fast. We'll see. Uh, so this, as I think most of the council knows, is the culmination of a process that started in November twenty twenty-four to kind of reassess the, the proclamation policy that we have or, or to establish one as well. Um, uh, at a previous meeting, um, you guys saw a draft of the policy and had a few comments. So we have integrated that into the new policy. We've kind of restructured it a little bit based on some of the comments in a way that I think it flows a little better and is a little more clear. Um, a few of the comments that were brought up last time that I just want to address real quick, um, were the, uh, counselor request process. Um, and we kind of worked shop that a little bit and ended up deciding to go with kind of the process, that the extent process that we have for counselors adding, um, items. So it would essentially be that a counselor would be able to make a motion during additions and deletions to, to add a proclamation at a future meeting and then the council could discuss it and vote on it at that time. Um, and then as far as the limiting a number of proclamations each month or session, because it sounded like the council didn't want a hard limit on that number. Um, we kind of figured the best way would be for the council to kind of use that in, in your decision-making factors. Because oftentimes, um, uh, with the annually repeated proclamations, there might be cases where we already have two scheduled for a meeting. So then if a request comes in, there's no space for them. Um, but we did add an item to kind of limit or put in a suggested limitation on the number of proclamations read at a meeting. Um, so that way it does kind of limit that a little bit. Um, so that's the, the proclamation we have in front of the councils today to consider. Uh, the only other item that we did want to add is with the adoption of this resolution, um, there's kind of a, um, awkward adjustment period because we have the Arbor Day proclamation to. there's kind of a awkward adjustment period because we have the Arbor Day proclamation typically the first meeting of April. So we're just recommending that if the resolution passes, that after you pass that resolution tonight, you make a motion to approve the Arbor Day proclamation. Because that one is tied to our status as Tree City USA. So that way you would just approve that for the next session because it wouldn't have time to go on the agenda. And then at the next meeting, we'll have a list of the rest of the proclamations for the air for you to assess.
Is sorry to interrupt. Is that the also the same with Domestic Violence Awareness Month? Because we have the Family Justice Center presenting in April, and we also like to do the proclamation the same time they present so they can. So I just wanted to make sure that if we have, like, those are aligned, right? When Family Justice Center comes and Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Yeah, I don't believe we have them scheduled for the first meeting in April. So it could be that on the next one. Anything that's after April 14th, we'll all have those proclamations on the consent agenda the next week.
What is it in April?
It's the Voices of Hope proclamation that is normally the one that's done. And the Domestic Violence Awareness Month is in October. But there's a Voices of Hope proclamation that's routinely been requested by the Family Justice Center. I think that's the one you refer to.
Thank you, Counselor.
And actually, that is scheduled, I think, for the April 14th meeting. It may occur after that, but I think it's actually scheduled for potential proclamation on April 14. So if you were looking at a motion for for Arbor Day, I would recommend that you also add Voices of Hope.
And that's all I have. Any?
Any other questions for Mariah? So wait, does someone need to amend that to add Voices of Hope?
So that this would be a separate motion after the resolution. So you would consider the resolution and the proclamation policy. And then if that's passed.
Thank you. Thank goodness for Mariah. Okay, what is the wish of the council?
Move to approve resolution 2025-13.
Resolution 2025-13 was moved by Council President Valenzuela and seconded by Counselor Gustafson. Will the city recorder or city manager? Sorry, you're in the wrong seat. Will the city manager please read that by title only?
Resolution 2025-13 establishing proclamation policy.
Okay, and let's open it for discussion. Any discussion? I mean, I just want to thank Mariah. She did a lot of work on this with legal advice. I mean, because it's public, it's city speech, trying to just like put a lot of things in a very systematic way that it created a good process. And, you know, the only thing I want to just be like, also invite you to tell us as if your workload changes from this, like in some sort of significant way that you let the council know. That's something I would appreciate. Okay, no further discussion? All those in favor of resolution 2025-13, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say aye. Hearing none. Resolution 2025-13 is approved by the Forest Grove City Council on a vote of seven to zero.
Do you need two separate motions for two different proclamations?
I think it's up to the council. I think one motion for both proclamations could be fine, or a separate motion for each proclamation could be fine.
I would make a motion then to for both. The Voice Voices of Hope and Arbor Day proclamation.
I have a motion from Counselor Falconer to approve two proclamations for Arbor Day and Voices of Hope. Does anyone want to second that? Okay, so so Counselor Falconer made the motion and Counselor Marshall seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none. So those two proclamations will be added to the April 14th agenda in a vote of seven to zero. Thank you, Mariah.
Thank you so much.
Okay, let's do some council reports. I'm going to start with Counselor Gustafson.
I don't have anything to report. I will write up a short brief on the trip over last week. But other than that, it was just to give a short, short report. It was great and very informative. I got a lot out of it. So I'm excited to do it again. That's it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Counselor Marshall.
Not a ton. I know that we had a special meeting with Parks and Rec to go over the fees. I believe that we're going to, they're going to come to a consensus tomorrow to bring it to council at the next meeting. I was going to ask if you would like to join me after they come with to us to have a stakeholders meeting with the groups, the local youth groups around here to kind of get, let them voice their opinion and kind of see what they want with it. After they bring their recommendation.
So I want to just paraphrase. So the Parks and Rec Commission wants to bring a recommendation to council.
Yes.
And then after they bring their recommendation to council, you and I and Anne or Jesse will meet with the nonprofit youths.
If that's something you'd be.
Yeah, I'm interested. I'm just wondering about the timeline if.
So I mean.
We'll figure it out, but yes, I would.
There's still no timeline for us to have this set in stone. So I think it'd be.
Yeah, I really would like to meet with them.
Kind of meet with them.
For sure.
I know I know most of the information from them because I've been talking to them over the last year or so.
Yeah.
So it'd be good for you to hear as well.
For sure.
So and be able to get their get their side of the thing.
Yeah. I'm definitely interested.
Perfect. I'll set it up when we get it.
Cool. Thank you. Counselor Martinez.
So I attended the rural fire department meeting. Cornelius, new fire chief, is Morris from Gaston. Meetings are pending to start discussion of the new normal between Forest Grove and Cornelius. Firefighter recruitment started again on March 4th. They were going to keep it open for three weeks, looking for some firefighters that are looking to be part of Forest Grove Fire Department. Lisa, oh, she's out for right now, medical leave. Budget Committee convening April, May 7th. And that's not a big deal. I also attended the NLC in Washington and felt that there was some really good information I came out with. And besides going to the meetings, it's the people that you meet there. And there were some really great people there. So same, I need to write something up with all that information. So it was, I felt a good event.
Great. Great. Thank you. Counselor Schimmel.
Thank you. Well, I'd echo both both counselors on the NLC conference. You know, my my brief would be, you know, conference was good and networking was great. The the youth delegations were phenomenal. I mean, it was so and the youth were so impressive there. You'd almost mistake them for adults. I mean, we were just, I was just ready to hand the keys over to them, take charge. And and I did, I did send out a summary of notes that I took. So I'd be happy to to share anything that looked interesting. But the one thing I would emphasize that's, I think, very relevant is with regard to funds being released is the the story that they kept saying is provider elected delegation discreet stories, make them relevant to the federal projects, identify the consequences of not not doing them. So for whatever, what the projects that we have yeah, parent obligated funds that we that risk losing that. That's where they've found success in getting funds released is by discreet project despite the the broad swath of stoppage. So wherever mayor, if you have opportunity to talk to our delegation, that's that's the the recipe for getting funds released. On the Lords and Commissions, CCTE, as you saw on the consent agendas, going through a couple of turnovers. They're working on tabling for the farmer's market coming up. So they'll be supporting Stephanie's staff. EDC, we were able to debrief comments from the last council meeting work session on the the grant program. And I think some of that feedback will show up in tonight's work session. Chamber still on strong financial footing. You know, a few things that were noteworthy is their partnership with West Valley Habitat. You know, if you're interacting with any state funds, WESB and COVID is an essential ingredient to to getting funding. And that that involves supporting minority and women owned businesses. So so that that's a partnership, that a working event that they're they're working toward. They're also connected with the Latino Business Advisory Council. So that that in connection with the the Business Development Center that they've they've started has strengthening the Latino connection. And then, and they mentioned the transitioning the sister city committee work over to them. And the only thing I didn't know was whether that that there were some payment of services for that, taking that on. I I wasn't aware of that.
Not in the MOU.
Yeah, I don't know. I believe so.
There was nothing outlined. I have the I've been reading over the copy of the resolution and some of the other stuff. And at least that I can see, there's no there's no mention of financial payment.
So I, well, we can put a pin in that, but I would generally have an issue with asking nonprofits to do work for free. So I mean, we can put a pin in that, but I want to redress that because I think that's maybe a pattern. I want to make sure we we address maybe through the budget cycle. And just other events attending their Metro held a mixer for newly elected. So Counselor Falconer had had a good time connecting with Metro staff. I mean, had had some good conversations. I'm stealing thunder now. So maybe I'll I'll let one of you speak to the Pacific event. But I I save him my favorite for last. I attended the firefighters banquet. That was an incredible honor to sit amongst heroes honoring the service of those firefighters and and was at a table of past fire chiefs. So that was, that was great.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Falconer. Yep, just making sure.
Yeah, I was light on liaison meetings, but I did have a few other opportunities to engage. Mentioned the Metro Mixer that was really great. The following day I had one of the other hats I wear is as a board member for Housing Land Advocate. We had our annual conference. It was very nice of Counselor Schimmel to attend. Our community development director also came. The theme for the conference this year was climate and climate change and change in a in a how to how to how to do housing in a changing climate. So it was it was really great. It was really well attended, about 150 or so people in person and lots of people virtually. I would really strongly recommend if you have an opportunity next year to attend. It's really great. It's one of the best housing conferences all year. As Counselor Schimmel mentioned, we we had the opportunity to attend the following day after that. On Saturday morning, the Spirit of Civic Engagement Summit at Pacific University. It was really a really just inspiring day of young people and young at heart people and experts in their fields. And some of us who aren't necessarily experts, but really passionate about the work to get together to talk about civic engagement in polarizing times. So it was it was also really well attended and it was a pleasure to be there.
Thank you, Counselor. Council President Valenzuela.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So yes, I want to just echo when my colleagues have said there were four of us attending the NLC conference. It was my first time being in DC and the first time for this event. It was uplifting in a way. But it was also you know, just kind of emotional. You get a little bit of emotional just to see all the people that are going through the same that your city is going through. They face the same challenges. The level of uncertainty is very high. But I cannot say enough how proud I am of our state, of our leadership. They were there to listen to us and respond to our questions. Congresswoman Bonamichi, Senator Merkley, and Senator Wyden. And they listened to the youth. They got to ask their questions. We had that great group coming along with us. So it was, it was a really a great, great experience. My other report is from the Policy Advisory Board. February 27th, they had, we had in-person presentations for the applicants for funding. There were 11 presentations, 11 applicants. For the Emergency Solutions Grant, there was one application, CDBG Public Services Grant, seven. And for CDBG Facilities and Infrastructure, there were three applicants. After that, there were, we did the scoring, the evaluation of each application. And we were able to fund everyone. So those are really great news. These are all important projects that need to, they need funding, they need to take place. So that's, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Council President. We're going to move on to our city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The city manager report will go out tomorrow, so I'll send that to each of you. We're waiting on a few statistics for for the graph portion of it. But a couple of things for the evening. A free Zoom webinar on the Required Oregon Public Meetings Law Training, which is sponsored by our own attorney firm, Barry Elsner and Hammond. Ashley Driscoll will be doing the training. This will occur March 20th. The council got a primer on this training as part of our council orientation process. This is the official training. It's March 20th. It will be filmed on YouTube and you can actually watch it at your leisure after that. I'll provide the website to the council tomorrow in my report. So if you can't make the March 20th date, that's fine. Another friendly reminder, the Statement of Economic Interest by the Oregon Government Ethics Commission has been sent to all electeds. It was sent out on March 15th. It's due by April 15th. If you have any questions, you can let me know or you can go online and visit the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. But just a friendly reminder, SCI forums are due by April 15th. The budget calendar has been amended. We have a vacancy currently in the senior accountant position. It's bumped the calendar back a little bit. And so I do want to thank you in advance for your patience. Some revised dates have gone out with Jamie, and we will revise the calendar and of course, get a hold of all the budget committee members accordingly. We're also conducting budget committee applicant interviews tomorrow. And so, Mayor, I don't know if you're going to report on that. But we have interviews tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon. And so that'll be coming likely to the consent agenda at the following meeting for for the council. The city's bond measure to replace the current police facility, it does have a measure number. It's been assigned by the county. It's 34-343. Any persons wishing to submit arguments for the Joint County Voters Pantholat can do so by going to the county website. Those arguments are due by March 25th. So the timeline is coming up. The Forest Grove Senior Community Center website is now being managed by Centro. I want to thank the senior center for allowing the city to utilize the FGSCC.org website. And I also want to thank Centro for updating and creating a new landing page for the website. You can expect that to come online shortly. There is a website on Centro for the senior center already, but this will be the FGSC FGSC.org website that was initially with the senior center. The Vision Labs and the Focus Group for Vision 2040 have been scheduled. The meetings are going to occur April 10th and 28th here in the community auditorium. So we are reaching out to participants and there will be some notifications going out as well. But again, that's April 10th and 28th for the Vision Labs, what's also known as Focus Groups. The Planning Commission approved the Economic Opportunities Analysis six to zero in March. We are looking at having a work session with the council probably at the next meeting on the EOA. So we can expect that at the April 14th meeting. The exclusive negotiating agreement for Site B with Fresh Foods that has expired. So at some point in the near future, pending the purchase of properties for Woodfold and also for the theater building, staff will kind of reengage and look at having a work session with the board about kind of what the big picture is with regard to all of the properties that we had, including Site B. So I did want to let you know that the ENA is expired. Six bids were open for the downtown improvements project. What's otherwise known as the Glow Up Project. I have some good news. The budget for the project was approximately $400,000 and the low bid came in at $270,000. So they came in in a bid. It was a strong pool of applicants. I think we had six applications. The. I think we had six applications. The protest period is over. Once the contract gets finalized, we will sit down and kind of look at a project delivery schedule. We are trying to be very mindful of any potential impacts to events, operations and businesses, obviously in the downtown. And so we were going to try and schedule and stage the, the construction accordingly, but more to come on that. The Highway Fern Hill Maple Intersection Project, it looks like they may need to relocate a BPA power pole. If that happens to be the case, typically working with a federal agency can sometimes have a delay on a project. And so we're following that pretty closely. The current construction schedule was supposed to occur in 2025, but we will find out shortly in working with the county if there may be delay in that. If there is, I'll report it back to the council. So, but there is a BPA power pole that has to be relocated. I believe it's on the north side of Fern Hill. So just stay tuned. We're working with BPA. The county is working with BPA. We'll see if we can try and keep that schedule on track, but I did want to let you know.
Okay, you can't end on a downer.
I'm not, I'm not. I'm trying to search for some really good news here. The Friends of the Library Book Sale is scheduled for May 8th through the 10th in the Rogers Room. Again, the Library Book Sale is May 8th through the 10th in the Rogers Room. And on, ending on another positive note, after selling some clean fuel credits, Light and Power has reopened both the clean fuel incentive for the EV chargers and for the bicycles. So if anybody's interested in that, the program has reopened.
That's good news.
And then I did have one last thing that I wanted to see if the, so the, the council has received quite a few emails about fluoride. If there's a consensus amongst the council, my thought was this is something the city has been doing for some time. It's an administrative program that we carry out every day. If there's a consensus with the council, I can ask our Public Works Director to just come brief the council on what our current practices are. And in an effort to kind of help just the council get up to speed on the issue, if that sounds okay.
I mean, I'm the, I would like to ask a question first. Can staff also email back the community members who have emailed us saying, hey, we're going to have a present? Like, thank you for your public comment. We're going to have a presentation on it to explain the deal. I mean, that would be, to me, that's like,
Sure. We will close the loop with the emails that we got. We'll let them know if there's a consensus with council to have a presentation. Reason I'm asking is it's not necessarily on the golden objective. So scheduling, and we have some presentations scheduled, but we can fit this in and this would be a way for the council to become more apprised of the issue if you would like.
Counselor Schimmel and Council President Valenzuela, can I get some thumbs up or heading on? Okay.
Sounds great. We'll schedule a presentation for the next meeting and we will respond to the emails that we've received so far.
Great, great. Thank you. Wait, Mayor's Report. On March 8th, the Chamber held their gala. And I think, you know, I just got to give a shout out to the Chamber. In the last few years, they've just done such a good job of creating community and an opportunity for people to support each other, to celebrate each other and are just doing a really good job, I think, on the day to day, building new programs. And then, you know, also celebrating the businesses we have. So shout out to Claudia, Amanda and her team, Piper, so my former students, interns from Pacific. Oh, on 3/12, I went and filmed a little promo with the chief for the police station bond. I don't know how well I did. I got to tell you, I was not feeling great about it. But so that's neither here nor there, but we could need to do our part to get this police station bond passed. So if we can, you know, if you guys, if y'all can look at your calendars, there's going to be some open houses. If you can commit to going to an open house, maybe go to the farmer's market and be at the police station booth that they have on first Wednesdays. These are things we can do. Yeah, Chief knows. He was filming with me. He was like, oh, Mayor. I mean, he had to carry the whole thing. So, but anyways, these are things we do, we can do. So figuring out a way you can show up for our police station and our police department would be great. On Friday, I attended Forest Grove Indivisible Group. They had some questions about Sanctuary City, some different things. So I went and answered some questions and showed up for that. I attended, this is, I want to give another plug and shout out to Morgan Nap and the Pacific Students for the Center for Civic Engagement. This was our second, what would you call it, conference? Council President Valenzuela attended it last year with me. And then this year, Counselors Falconer and Schimmel attended. But this is student run. Really just such a good conference and it's a fill you up conference, I think. That's why I said yes again. Even though every day I'm very busy, but it was, it's really good for your heart. So I think, you know, again, just like our partners, Pacific, Chamber, Habitat, all these groups just do a really good job. Okay. And then I'm going to put, put it in the middle. So it's not super negative. I attended Washington County Corning Committee today. So we talked about the TV Highway Bus Rapid Transportation Project. And for the audience, like that's a project to increase time efficiency for Trimate along Bus 57 line. Make it safer, have some pullouts. It's a very expensive project. It was supposed to meet the needs of a small start grant, which is a federal grant that they could apply for. Right now, federal funding is in limbo. So, you know, we're moving forward with that project. But then even in this situation, J-PAC, our regional transportation group, is going to look at some draft bond scenarios. And the, the scenario that they were initially proposing to mayors and to the region was to spread their $80 million grants to five projects. 82nd Avenue Bus Rapid Transportation, I think, and then TV Highway Bus Rapid Transportation. And then Mountain Park, Streetcar, Burnside and Sunrise. And so the message we gave, I'm just wanting to be like very honest. The message that we gave as mayors and the message that Trimate gave too, Trimate spoke out and said, they're not going to support it. Because the project has already been reduced, costs have already been cut and there's no way that they can do it. Cause basically what they're trying to do is reduce the cost each project got, like spread out the peanut butter. I think was the analogy that was used in the meeting. Spread it out so everyone got a little bit instead of fully funding. And some of these projects aren't regionally, regional projects that affect multiple cities. And so TV Highway affects Beaverton, Aloa, Hillsborough, Cornelius and Forest Grove. And you're looking at, you know, I'm not trying to like, but I'm going to, but you're looking at one little neighborhood for a streetcar. I mean, like why, like we're in, we're in desperate times with funding. So these are tax dollars that Washington County communities pay, citizens pay. And they need to come back to Washington County. That's my message on that. So we're going to see where that goes. We're still moving forward with that project because we know that things are going to get more and more expensive. But projects like these critical, critical safety improvement projects on major highways. This is what's in jeopardy right now and what we're kind of, what we are grappling with as local leaders. Okay. Then I would like to say thank you to the council for participating with the State of the City. I thought it went really good. I thought your videos were really good. I thought you guys did a really great job and I just want to say like, thank you for, I know you had to go into TVCTV to film those, but I thought that it just added a lot of value to the group. So thank you all. And I, when I publicly say thank you to people, I don't think realize how small our city hall staff is. So I would like to publicly thank Joyce and Stephanie. Y'all, all those communication, like bravos, that was done by two people. Like, I mean, our communications team is two people. So that incredible engagement with the 2040, you know, the police station bond, getting those promos out and then helping me with the State of the City, that's two people, you know, and Cody, I mean, I'm going to have to shout out Cody too on the Parks and Rec for getting those. But I would also like to say this, that it proves it's working. Tonight's attendance was over, I didn't count, I was too busy, but I heard that there was over 100 people that attended the State of the City. That means that everything that they are doing is working because through social media, through the newsletters, through word of mouth, like people showed up. So that's another accolade. And, you know, for what Stephanie and Joyce have been doing. So just wanted to make sure that I pointed that out. Okay. And I'm going to end it with that. So this meeting is adjourned, but we have a work session after this. And we're going to have an executive session following that. Okay, meeting adjourned. Do we want to just stay up here for just one minute? Yeah, I need to have a bio break too. Look at my mess.
Get a water.
And joining via Zoom, Council President Valenzuela, Counselor Schimmel, Counselor Falconer, Counselor Martinez, Counselor Marshall, myself, Bear Wenzel, and city staff left in the building. Okay, I'll turn it over to Brian Poole and Miles Galati.
Thank you, Chair Wenzel, members of the board. I was not trying to correct you, I promise. Brian Poole here with you on the URA Building Improvement Grant Program. I've got some serious allergies going on, so I'm probably going to pass most of this over to Miles. But I did want to kind of introduce this tonight to kind of our part two of the Building Improvement Grant Program. The purpose of tonight's work session is to, you know, in the last sense, in the last work session, we, we heard your concerns. And we wanted to work through some of those things in this work session. So we wanted to address the board's concerns and questions from last time. We also wanted to reach consensus on how we will do this next year in 25, 26 grant cycle. And then also, we also have to reach consensus on how we want to handle this 24, 25 grant cycle. So to kind of, I guess, summarize the last meeting, February 24th, we met. And these were the things we heard from the board. And I don't, I don't want to say they were 100% exhausted, but I think they're pretty much inclusive of kind of what we heard and what we took from that. That you wanted to address the barriers to participation, that you're having some issues designing, difficulty assigning numeric values to eligibility criteria. Things that may have been yes, no answers. You're trying to score. Understood. And the applications didn't give you significant, sufficient information to make a decision. The applications and the scoring criteria were not necessarily related to the scoring criteria. I'm sorry, the narrative was, the narratives in the applications were not necessarily related to the scoring criteria. That those applications need to be aligned with the program's requirements, goals and objectives. And that you wanted to improve the application and scoring process for the next cycle. I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Miles for a while. I might kind of bump in here with whatever else I want to or need to.
Yeah, I'll just add that, so we, we got comments back from the work session. And then we also had some comments that came in after the presentation was sent out. So we'll address those a little later in the presentation. So we didn't lose those. They're coming. To kind of work with the accessibility issue, we have the Design Grant Program. It's an, it's open year round. It's really to help prepare applicants to apply for the Building Improvement Grant Program. It provides up to $5,000 for design, engineering or architectural work related to the proposed improvements. There's no match required. And we're going to, we're working to find architect that we can contract with to provide that service, just make it easier, even easier for people to find someone to work with. We're proposing separating out the scoring process into two parts. And part one would be an eligibility part. And these would be yes, no questions to determine if the project meets the minimum program requirements as established by the URA Board. And staff would go through those questions, yes, no. And if they are correct in their, their affirmation, then they would be forwarded for scoring. And the second part would be the goals and objectives. These are more informational questions or narratives that determine how well the project meets the program goals and objectives as established by the URA Board. And these questions will be scored by the EDC and/or the URA Board to enable projects to be ranked and then facilitate a discussion about which projects to award grants to. Here's a list of the eligibility questions. They're not all yes answers. It's not always correct. So is property located within the urban renewal answer yes, but will the project or has the project answered all the questions would be yes. But does the application seek reimbursement for permit fees? That would be a no. So I would go through that and, and make sure that they meet all the requirements before it's forwarded on. And then these are the informational questions that are related to the goals of the URA plan and the program. So kind of broke it out by category and it's increase assess value and stimulate investment. So applicants would be asked for the grant amount and the amount of matching funds. And we're looking at the ratio there to see if, how much of an impact the matching dollar is making. And so for example, a one to two match would receive a higher score than a one to one match. If the business owner was putting in twice as much money as they were requesting for their development. Create jobs. Applicants would be asked what type and number of non-construction jobs will be created. And then the applications would be scored based on the type and number of jobs created. Boost leasing appeal. Applicants would be asked to describe how the project will increase the space's desirability for leasing, including increases to square footage, conversion of space from one type to another and projected future uses of space. And applications are scored based on these factors. For example, space that converts to a higher use is scored higher than a space that is renovated for the same use.
And I'll kind of just sort of bust in here, I guess, a little bit and say that, you know, we've had some healthy conversation on staff about how these might look and, you know, sort of are these criteria hitting the mark? And one of the things that we kind of came up with is that, you know, there are some things that are not necessarily mutually exclusive, but it would be hard for a project to kind of hit perfectly on all of these things. One of the things is, is these two you see on the screen right here, boosting leasing appeal and creating jobs. If, if you have an empty building that you're trying to get more sort of market ready, if you will, like say you want to, you know, finish out some things, you want to upgrade a panel or something like that. You might really score high on the boost leasing appeal. But if you're the property owner doing that, that work to your business or to your building, you may not know that create, creating jobs answer. It might just be kind of a nebulous sort of answer. And so as we go through these, I think just kind of keep in mind that, you know, it would be unlikely that any project would kind of hit it out of the park with all of these.
Enhance functionality. Applicants are asked to describe how the project increases the functionality of the space. So things like HVAC, plumbing, electrical improvements for current or future tenants. Questions could be like, how will the project improve access or ADA compliance? Or how will the project improve the aesthetics of the space? Applications will be scored based on these factors. For example, a project that improves the aesthetics of space would score higher than a project that does not. And then promote sustainable practices. Applicants asked to describe how the project will improve the environmental efficiency of the building. And then it would be scored based on that response. This was the initial scoring rubric we had where each section is quantified and you're able to score it. We've got, for this example, 50 points possible. So this is where we heard additional information after the packet went out, that there were some additional areas that we can incorporate the OR plan, purpose, goals and objectives into this program. And some of the specific objectives highlighted were 3.1, which is to to reduce development costs to encourage private investment that for projects providing a public benefit and result in increased property values and efficient use of land. 4.1, establish a program to encourage preservation, conservation and adaptive reuse of designated and contributing historic resources. Objective 4.4, encourage the construction of needed housing and mixed-use development. And then Objective 4.5, encourage uses and amenities that support increased residential uses downtown. So to get kind of to those questions, I propose as, asking these three additional yes, no eligibility questions. Does the project eliminate blight and blighting influences? Does the project provide a public benefit? And will the project likely increase the assessed taxable value of the property? So in addition to those other ones from the previous slide, these three additional questions. And then these three additional areas to be scored by the, the URA Board. Encourage the preservation of historic resources. So applicants would be asked to use the state database to determine if their property is a historic resource. If it is a contributing historic resource, they'll ask to describe how the project will preserve that space or reuse, adaptive reuse or, and then you would be scored on that answer. For historic resources, there's more staff help available as they go through the historic review process. Encourage the construction of needed housing and mixed-use development. Well, applicants will be asked if the project creates or maintains housing. And projects will be scored the extent that the project creates or maintains housing. And projects will be scored the extent that the project creates or maintains housing downtown. And then encourages uses and amenities that support increased residential uses. We would ask how, them to describe how the project would do that and then score based on that. And this is what the rubric would look like. It would be eight areas with a total of 80 possible points. So we'll pause there and, and just see if there's questions or comments about, about what's presented.
Counselor Falconer.
Thank you. That's very responsive to some of the concerns that I had about, you know, sort of how does, how is the program responsive to the plan? And that addresses, I think, all of my point minus one. And I just wondered if objective 4.2 is about assisting with the construction of a, of public gathering space. And so that would be one other maybe slight element under objective four about that gathering space. I think, you know, with that, all of my little highlights, I think it hits that all of my little, all of the things that were bottom line. Just encouraging gathering space. So thank you. That's, that's my comment. Thank you very much. Very responsive to my concerns.
Counselor Schimmel.
Well, a couple of things. One question for my colleagues, if retention of jobs would be as relevant as new jobs. And the context is where many of these buildings are historic and risk critical failure. If a project isn't done, the potential is we lose a business, we lose employment. Given the historic nature of many of these buildings and the revitalization goal, would, would you support adding retention with the, the new job?
I, I would agree with that. I would support that definitely. Yeah.
So you're saying adding to number two?
No, just retain or create.
Retain or create.
Which one they're accomplishing.
I'm okay. I see head nod.
And then just suggesting, I appreciate you adding the historic asset aspect in there. And you mentioned pursuing an, an architecture firm. You know, a couple of things I'd, I'd recommend in a firm search is a preservation, historic preservation specialist. The, the reason is particularly if, if we're gonna, there's going to be an application to a state main street program. That's an imperative is that there's, it reflects the interior secretary preservation standards. So have, a firm having that specialist is key. And then given the historic nature and the, again, the risk of critical failure to some of these buildings is ensuring that they have, they have a subcontractor who is a structural engineer. And I know many architecture firms have one that they work with to assess the existing conditions of the building as part of that design.
Are you good? Are you guys good? I want, I have a couple of questions. Okay. Let's see, which way do I want to go first? So when it says it's a total 80 out of, or 80 possible points, like what is the proficient? Like what is the passing score? Or if it's going to be approved or not?
So that would be up to the board to decide. What they consider, I mean, each project is, is going to be weighed. No project would, would meet all 80. So each project is going to have to be weighed against either itself or against other projects. I don't have an answer for what, us.
Yeah, I agree. And that's why I was wondering like, okay, well, you know, because sometimes it's like, hey, do they hit all of these eight things? Instead of like the criteria being like, here's the goal, here are those like examples of how it meets that goal. And then kind of a range, right of like, hey, this meets, like this doesn't meet, this meet, and this succeeds. Or, I mean, I just think about everything in a teacher's standpoint. But like even, I think, like, I should rewind. I think that a lot of the things are there. I'm just trying to like push to make sure that the, when the applicant applies, they say like, hey, this question is going to meet this scoring element, right? Like they can see the alignment. And then the people scoring it can also see the alignment of like, hey, this is where I, like, hey, I don't really know about. Did increase the desirability, like let me go to their question and see what their question said. And then like say, okay, well, did they hit on these other things, right? Like, I'm just trying to like.
So I don't have the application done yet, of course. But what I imagined is that those increased assess value and stimulate private investment would be a header. And then your questions would be under that.
Right.
And the information about what that would be on the loading page of
Okay. Yeah, because, because I would agree that I think that for me, it's just like getting that holistic view, right? Like they're not going to get, I mean, I wouldn't imagine that someone should even get maybe like, you know, 70 points out of 80, like if they have like two minus here. So I'm just trying to figure out a way that we make sure there's like a passing, like this meets and that, that's all really clear for the applicant and the scores.
I think that, that's up to the board to decide.
So is the, is the, sorry to interrupt, but is the, is a potential suggestion here to have a, a kind of minimum score or a minimum threshold that they have to reach?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I think for me, I don't know even about the, I don't know. I'm like, I don't want to get too far in the weeds, but it like, to me, it's like, I just almost stayed as like three categories, right? Like if they don't like, let's say they don't meet one, but they meet two and they meet three and they exceed at this. Like at the end of the day, how are we going to really know? Like, do they have to meet all of them or do they have to get a score? I'm like, I'm just trying to flush it out. Like I'm trying to anticipate where it could be a little bit muddy and trying to make it not as muddy.
I don't know if this helps clarify it, but in the, before they would get scored, they do have to answer affirmative or meet all of the requirements prior to being scored. And so I think what we were kind of trying to wrestle with is what are the requirement questions? Where it's, where it's a binary yes or no, and they have to meet that requirement to be scored. And in this case, they have to meet all the requirements, not like seven out of 10 or, you know, but they have to meet all of them. And then I think we were trying to kind of separate, what are the subjective questions that could be scored by the board and have a variance of scoring? If the board would like, oftentimes on an RFP, you could schedule it one to five. So you have less of a variance than one to 10. Five could be the best, one would be, you know, not, not the best. And then you could have a minimum point requirement. We can require any of those and certainly open any suggestions. This was just kind of, I think, a first take at it with 10 points for a question. Eight questions, you could also do a weighted average. If there's something where the board thinks is more important than another one, you could have a weighted average where one is worth 10 and another one is worth five. When we went back and looked at both the plan and the program goals, I think what we were kind of suggesting here is that these are all, I don't know, they're necessarily the same, but we didn't put a weighted average on what they may be because they all came from the plan, if that makes sense. And they all came from the program. So, but if there is something that the board wants to weight more heavily, absolutely you can do that.
I think too, it gives each board member the opportunity to have some more discretion about how they want to score each one. Because I can think of an example that wouldn't score 70, but may be a really great project.
Yeah.
And so you, so having that flexibility to say it's, it's not a 70-point project, but it's going to create 100 jobs, say.
Right.
That would be an important project.
Counselor. Question. You know, having, I think, like a minimum pass fail, you know, trying to set it up that way could potentially in the future be problematic. Because this year we had fewer applications. We, we didn't have as many applications as we had dollars. But in future years, we could end up with 100 applications. And we're going to have to use our discretion to determine which ones we, and they could all be really good projects, but we only have so much money to award. So I, I think we need to give ourselves a little bit of flexibility so that, you know, yes, we want a transparent process. We want, we want applicants to understand what the goals are and, you know, what the, what the, what the criteria are that will be, that, you know, that we'll be evaluating. But we have to also acknowledge that there are limited funds. And we have to, we have to make some tough decisions. Do you have a comment?
Well, maybe at, at least reducing the 10 down to five or even three. Shrinking that window. Yeah, I, yeah, I'm wrestling with sort of, I guess, arbitrary scoring for some of these where it's part one qualifies the project or the program against the plan. You know, this, this is the, like, that discretionary piece that might differentiate projects. But does that necessarily mean some don't get funded when they've already qualified?
Eligible, I mean, and so you qualify, you're eligible, that doesn't mean that you're, you're granted.
Yeah.
If you, just wrestling with this aspect of it, that, how we differentiate projects that we should absolutely do.
Yeah, I think, I think both comments are like, have a lot of value. I guess I want to say like we're my, what I'm trying to figure out is, you know, when we have EDC like reading these first, right? And then we have counselors that come in and are elected every two years, right? Like what I just want to make sure is that however much we can like create synergy and alignment. So everyone like kind of take away that discretion of someone not underst, I mean, I mean, we're assuming that everyone on EDC understands.
We can talk about the process on the next slide.
Okay, that's the next slide. So I'm jumping ahead. Okay. I, I would like to see it go, I mean, maybe just a little bit, shrink it to zero to five points. Maybe for each goal, I think that there's like too much of a variance in zero to 10 that will make it hard to like, personally, that's just me, like it's going to be too hard, like once you start and you have 80 points possible and you're like, oh, well, which way is it? I mean, I don't know, that's just my personal opinion. I'm not.
Easier for us to align on just three to five versus a.
I'm a zero to five percent.
Either way.
It's sort of, I mean, I, I think by way of sort of bigger picture a little bit. I mean, I think it's probably important to note that there's a reason why you're here, meaning as the Urban Renewal Agency and not the city council. And, and one of those reasons is that by design, this process is supposed to be a little bit more nimble than the city council kind of is, is used to. You know, you get a quasi judicial land use application in front of you and you've got all the criteria and you've got to just go through everything with fine tooth comb. Realistically, as, as a URA Board, I mean, if you just like a project, that, that's enough justification for you to award money to it. And or however much money what you want to, to as well. And that's kind of by design. No, I'm not saying there's not merit. And of course, you know, sort of normalizing these scores and sort of, you know, getting them, you know, in front of you in a way that is sort of takes the subjectivity out of it. But you're allowed to have that subjectivity. And, and I think that there's some recognition that there may just be a project that you guys get really excited about, that maybe doesn't create a single job. But, you know, has your sort of dream, I, I'm trying to get a good example and nothing's coming to my mind. I don't know. But you want to have that sort of flexibility to be, you know, to kind of operate your discretion, be nimble and make decisions that, that you can get excited about. With that said, understood, we'll take it down to zero to five. We do want to maintain this sort of scoring scheme. But I just want to remind you that, you know, you do have that ability as the URA Board to be a little more discretionary. I mean, many places, this is an open sort of door. There's no application period, there's no formal application. And someone just comes in front of you and says, we want $500,000 to do this thing. And you say, oh, we don't really want to do that, or we do, that sounds great, but we'll give you 350. That's the kind of thing you're dealing with, dealing with here is, is it not necessarily, it doesn't have to be an objective decision every time it comes in front of you. So I just want to kind of throw that, throw that into the conversation so that you're just kind of thinking about that a little bit too.
Okay. We're gonna, I think, are we okay to move on? Because we do have another exact session after this, so we should probably try to.
This is the proposed process for next year. Applications open July 1st through December 31st. Staff certify all the applications in January. And then they'll be scored and awarded February to March, grant agreements in April, and then projects commence. Here's some process options on how you want to utilize the EDC or, or, or not. Option one is the EDC board blend, kind of what we did today, or this, this round where the EDC and board score the applications separately. The, the scores are combined. You could establish a minimum score to be considered by the board, and then the board would deliberate and award. A second option would be that EDC scores and makes a recommendation to the board. The EDC could establish a minimum score to be accepted by the board. Grant awards are placed on the consent agenda. The board approves the consent agenda, agenda request reconsideration. So the board wouldn't actually score the applications in that scenario. And then option three would be the URA Board without the EDC scores and deliberates on awards.
You don't like opinions now? Okay, so let's get some thoughts on this. Counselor Schimmel.
Well, I, I generally request consistency in all of our processes where, where it makes sense. You know, notably with RFPs, you know, there's some consistency with, with how we do RFPs. If, if it's going, because we like with the senior center, there was a, there was a separate committee that scored it. And then the council scored it. So some of that, yeah. Yeah. So, but yeah, there's just some consistency, even if they're different entities that are doing the scoring. Otherwise, I guess, given our comfort level option, man, I guess the place we're starting, I wouldn't mind moving to option two as, as we get comfortable with how things are moving.
So I'm hearing option one to start with and potentially option two from Counselor Schimmel, I mean, Director Schimmel. And Council President Valenzuela.
Yeah. So going back to the thought of not establishing a minimum score, you know, if we could remove that, for example, from these options from one and three and two. And I would probably opt for option two as well.
Other directors? Counselor Guffson, okay, then you go. Yeah, Counselor Guffson, I mean, Director Guffson.
One or two, I'm leaning towards.
Okay, one or two?
Yeah.
Didn't hear the leaning towards, sorry.
Did you say leaning towards something?
Yeah, one or two, haven't decided which one, one or two.
Go ahead, Counselor, or Director Falconer.
Leaning toward one, but removing the minimum score.
Is there consensus to remove the minimum score? Because there's discretion to.
I think so.
I, I've been, I see.
Yeah.
I had notes on that, okay. So I'm hearing two right now for sure, option one.
One.
Okay, Counselor, Director Marshall. I think there's a good enough consensus. We're going to go with option one for right now.
Okay, and then quickly for this year's grants. We had the open application period. The program is funded at $350,000 for the year. Nine applications received totaling 241,000 in requests. Of course, this is our first time through the process. The EDC met in February and recommended funding six of the nine applications. And then allow three applications to submit additional information for reconsideration this fiscal year. They had some modifications to the rubric. And they recommended projects with an average score of 30 or higher be eligible for funding. And then the URA Board met and scored the projects. Here's the grant request amount for each project. And then at the far side is the combined average score. So EDC's recommendation is anything over 30 would receive funding.
You want to go back?
Yeah.
That's better. So does staff have any feedback or suggestions based on the scoring?
I don't know that staff has a whole lot of suggestions. I don't know that staff has a whole lot of suggestions here. Um, you know, the, the thirty minimum would, would result in, uh, taking thirty-two, twenty-four Pacific off of, uh, the grant fundees. I will remind you that, you know, we were budgeting $330,000 for the fiscal year. Um, if you were to award all of these, that does not exceed the budget. Um, and so that's at your discretion, obviously, how you want to move forward. Um, but, uh, putting those in your mind that, you know, that this, this would change the minimum grant, or sorry, the, the number of grants you'd receive if you did thirty. Uh, and so any conversation you want to have about that is welcome.
Um, can you go back to the project that's three, two, two, four, Pacific Avenue? I mean, that's pretty close to the thirty for the average. So me personally, I wouldn't be okay. I don't know how everyone else feels about that. Give it thirty, so yeah. Um. Okay. And then you want to, we go back to the scoring sheet? So I think there's a green, I mean, looking at the combined average, I'm just going to do the combined average and not then the project that if we include three, two, two, four, and then up, those are all approved, right? So that would be one, two, three, four, five, six. Is there agreement with the board on that? Okay. So now we just need to discuss the four, the four projects below that, or no, the three projects below that. Uh, anyone have any thoughts about those three projects? I guess I'll start. I don't think we should fund them this year. I don't think that they, I think that we don't know how much funding we're going to have the following year. Um, so while we may have budgeted 350,000 this year and we have enough to do it. Like I don't and I'm like, I'm not trying to like throw shade at all, but I don't know if we really are meeting all the goals that we want to hit. And so I don't want to put something through that isn't scoring. Um, and so I, I would be in favor of not funding those three projects. I don't know.
I think based on the application process that we had in front of us, I think that the numbers came out the way that they did.
Counselor or Director Shemel?
Well, I would, I would support the, the, um, the two fifty project that replaces the front door. Uh, just from an accessibility standpoint, uh, to that storefront.
Anyone else? Yeah. Uh, Counselor Director Gussin.
I think if we approved the two fifty, we'd have to approve the other ones as well.
Would it have made any difference on the, the combined average with, um, Board Member Martinez, if she would have gotten any of the, her numbers in there? Those are the bottom three.
No, ask her. Is it divided by five?
Is it divided by five?
It's divided by.
I don't think it was. I think you were exempted from those ones. You didn't score it bad.
I just didn't know if that was added.
I also did, did, do you, can you answer?
I, I can't remember definitively.
Yeah.
Can you do that math, please?
Yeah, I was going to say, it was total of. I mean, two.
I must have missed the question. Was the question if the last three projects were scored by Counselor Martinez, if it would raise the averages to those?
When you divided it, when you went to get the average, did you like mark hers as a zero or divide it by six uh, directors or by five? My, one oh two divided by five is twenty point four or so. Oh, that's right. Yeah.
The board average.
So you did it by five. Yeah. So, so it wouldn't change. I mean.
There should be four.
No, it should be five.
Not if you took out Martinez. What am I looking at here?
It would have been the six.
Two, three, four.
Because he wasn't, he wasn't here.
I only see four.
It would be only four.
How come we're missing?
Yeah.
We'll start re-missing.
Well, I mean, you just look across there. One, two, three, four.
They were divided by five. Yes.
Can you rerun that and divide it by four?
That's twenty-five point five divided by.
So if you divide each of those by four on the board member total, the one that was a hundred and two would be twenty-five point five. The one that was eighty-two, I'm just doing the math in my head, would be, if you divided by four, would be twenty point five. And the ninety-one, if you divide that by four, oh boy, that one's going to be a little harder. Uh, that would be twenty-two point five, twenty-two point five. So as to whether that would raise those averages above thirty, it doesn't appear as though it would.
Director Shemel. Did you want to say something?
Well, I, I understand, uh, the, the, the scoring, it, uh, was following the last work session. We, we, we just agreed that to exercise our discretion and eliminate a minimum. So that, that's, that's my thought process and suggesting one of these. But I mean, that may open up as, uh, Director Gussisun mentioned, the other two. So do we, we, we agreed on something? Do we apply that immediately despite the scoring from last meeting?
The, the agreement is to get rid of the minimum. So you have discretion, but for this, for this scoring practice, the way we rated them was based on a minimum. So like, for me, like it just kind of keeps the parameters of how we're assessing it. Like if, I mean, again, we're having a discussion. So if people don't want to follow the thing and then, you know, you said, hey, I want this one. If there's consensus, then we'll do that. I guess is what I'm saying.
The alternative is that what, what I remember, I did watch the, the replay of the last meeting, so I'm up to speed. Uh, uh, but what I remember hearing is that not, not, not saying we're not investing in the project, but sending it back to the applicant for additional information.
That would be an.
Was that for that project?
Well, for the three.
That's why I didn't score.
You're going to get more.
Okay. So did that happen? Did we get additional information?
I, I haven't received additional.
Did, did you ask them for additional information?
I've asked, uh, two, one, one, eight, nine, have additional information. Don't know that there's additional. Two, zero, seven, seven.
I mean, I'm just kind of split on it. I feel like it's only $250. So like we could just award it, but then I also agree with Counselor Gussin that if like, for me to kind of like parse it out, if I'm saying this is the number and then I don't want to also open the door. But then again, I do have discretion. So if anyone else has an opinion about it.
No, I, I would support the two hundred and fifty.
You would support it?
I would support funding that.
I have two directors supporting the two fifty.
And really with the board average with only four is twenty-five point five. So it's up with thirty-two point.
Yeah. Okay. So I have, is that a consensus for that?
Mm-hmm.
Counsel Falconer, you good?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're going to move forward with funding the two hundred and fifty grant request from twenty, two, zero, zero, seven, twenty-first Avenue. Is there consensus to not fund at this time without reapplying or additional information? I, I mean, I'm saying like they can apply it the next grant cycle. Like I don't want to belabor this process, but that's just my opinion. Is there consensus not to currently fund two, one, one, eight, nineteenth Avenue or two thousand, seven, twenty-first? I see a nod, head nod. Counselor Guffson, what do you think?
We funding the three, two, two, four.
Yes.
Okay. So even though it's under the thirty?
Well, it's twenty-nine point five. So.
Okay.
I thought you said three, two, two, four.
Yeah, I mean, um, I don't know. It, we're either we're either going to draw a line or we're not going to draw a line. Um, if we're going to take the two fifty, I think we should take all of them. Cause we moved the line.
I'm not seeing any consensus here with the directors to do that. I think I understand what you're saying because I have similar, but there's discretion on how each individual director sees it. So.
I would support a half measure to Counselor Gussisun is, is to get information, more information and not ask them to apply again. I mean, they just, we just need them to fill it, fill in where we see.
Well, I, my belief is that that happened to two, one, one, eight, and we still haven't received anything. And so I, I don't know.
I, I don't think he's very far in his. I don't think he has more.
The door, you know. No, this was for the refrigerator. No, that wasn't for the refrigerator. This was for the nail salon. Oh. Interior of the nail salon. I mean, based on, I, I mean, I don't want to sound like I'm going to take a breath, but like based on me understanding the goals, like that's, I'm going to further like stand on my ground a little bit for my position of not funding the bottom two, because I don't really see how they align with the URA plan and goals at this point. Like, I mean, I think that's where the discretion comes in is that at this point I don't see how it, I don't think my, you know, you guys can obviously see that my scores were. Anyways, maybe I'm a low scorer, but like when I went through the scoring sheet, I didn't see those things. So that's why, that's where I am with that.
Here, I think we have consensus.
Okay.
The seven. I'm counting right.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I think so too. Okay. So let's move on because we have another exec session. So we have consensus to score or, yeah, you're fine.
To award the top seven?
Award the top seven and then not the bottom two. Okay. And I'm going to, before I close this work session, we are going to move into executive session. Executive sessions are closed to the public. No formal decisions or actions will be taken. Media may not attend executive sessions on labor negotiations per ORS one, nine, two, point, six, six, zero.
Thank you.
Adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're, we're going to head into.